Test, test, test.
Test, test. Can you hear it? Test, test.
Good morning. I call to order the October 17th, 2023, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
I would ask that you please stand, join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We'll now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Danette Toon. I'm at 5340 South Maxwell in Mentor, Kansas. I would like to speak today on the Bess project that I think will be coming to you sometime in November. I wanted to talk for just a minute about the economic development impact of it. In a prior life, I was an executive of an economic development entity, so I have a little bit of knowledge on this particular topic. From an economic development standpoint, there are two ways that a community gets income from new projects, and that's why economic developers go after large projects in particular. One is that as you build a project, they hire local people, local contractors, to build the building, to lay the concrete, to move the dirt, all of those kinds of jobs that need to be taken care of. And those people then spend their money at restaurants, and so it's what we call a multiplier effect of the dollars. And so this project would include some building, not a lot, because the majority of the dollars of this particular project are going to be in the form of batteries, very large batteries, that will be manufactured somewhere, not Saline County, so they will be brought in. So the dollars that one will see from a multiplier of the actual building of this project will be dollars in reality, but not as one might build the old Phillips plant, the old Great Plains Cabota plant. Those would be very, very large multiplier effects. The other way that you make dollars is through the actual tax, property tax associated with it. And this project does have a multimillion-dollar value that they have put on it, so there would be some substantial tax revenues. So that would be one of the considerations that we know that you all have to consider when you think about this. But the real economic benefit, the reason that economic developers go after economic development projects generally, is because of the jobs that they provide, the stable jobs that they provide to the community members. This project will have one job, and it's our understanding that they have to live within an hour radius of the project. So as a general rule, your economic developers want large projects that bring a tax base in, but that also bring a lot of jobs in, because as I mentioned with the construction project, there are the multiplier effects of those jobs as they come in. Those jobs, again, if Great Plains were to hire 100 new people, that's very substantial to Saline County, because the majority of those workers would be here. They would buy houses. But on a construction side, it's a very different animal. And when there's only one job involved, there aren't a lot of tax revenues, a lot of benefits. The other thing that most economic developers look at is, are the dollars coming from outside of the area? Does that company sell their product internal, or do they sell it external? That's why we don't generally go after retail, but we go after wholesale or we go after commercial, because those companies, those manufacturers, are going to bring dollars from some other, from Wichita, from Reno, from Phoenix. Those would be new dollars that are coming in. So those are the basics of economic development, and I just wanted to make sure that you all had a good firm understanding of that as you go through some of this process, because I don't think we, as economic developers, oftentimes do a good job of explaining to those people that we're working with what we're doing, why we're doing, and how we're doing, and what the impact might be to the community. And the reason that I bring this up is, I was with my grandsons this weekend, and this is my last point. I was with my grandsons this weekend, and they're small, they're 12 and nine. They would hit me if they heard I said they were small. They're young, young boys, and they wanted to play games with their grandma. And so the game we played this weekend was, what would you do for a million dollars? And so they had this little computer, and one of the things was, would you jump in a pit of alligators? And I said, well, that's not worth a million dollars to me, I would die. And so I would just ask you to put yourself in that place. Sometimes we look at things solely from a dollar perspective, and as a former economic developer, that was one of the main things that I did for my community. But sometimes it's not about money. Sometimes there are more things that we need to consider, and with a battery energy storage plant, right now, we don't have policies and procedures in place. We know that you've put a moratorium on solar, but we would ask that you strongly consider not moving forward on a battery storage plant until you have procedures permitting those kinds of things in place first, before you move forward on a project that could have catastrophic results for community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for approval of the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of the county commission minutes for September 26th of 2023, approval of an agreement with PBS for building commissioning services on the new jail, DRCL electric contract for Expo Center disposition of property, approval of county commission minutes for October 3rd of 2023, and approval of addendum to ARPA Safer and Healthier Grant Agreement with the Central Kansas Mental Health Commission. So are there any items that commissioners wish to have accountability for or pull from the agenda today? And if not, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved, and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. We'll move to today's action items. Item number one.
2024 Sheriff's Office Vehicle Replacement with Captain Jim Hughes from the Sheriff's Office.
Morning, Captain Hughes.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here today to talk to you about the 2024 Sheriff's Office Vehicle Replacement. And as you know, we're requesting the purchase of four marked police package SUVs to replace four vehicles that are in the operations fleet. The new vehicles that we're asking for would replace a 2016 Ford Police Interceptor, a 2018 Ford F-150, and two 2020 Dodge Durango Police Package SUVs. These vehicles currently range in miles from 70,000 to 120,000 miles, and additional 5,000 miles per month is expected until new vehicle delivery. Today's, you have the options to purchase the vehicles per one that received bids, or of course, return the request for action to the Sheriff's Office for further instruction. Four vehicle bids were, or four bids were received from different vendors when bids went out, and they were from Newberry Family Auto in Harper, Kansas, for $234,477.65 without trades. And they offered a $32,500 trade allowance, which would bring the amount down to $201,977.65. Stivers out of Prattville, Alabama, offered a bid for $239,966, and they did not desire to get into the trade business with us. Serv out of Andover, Kansas, offered $254,101.80 without trades, a $50,241 trade allowance, which would bring down their bid to $203,860.30. And Marshall Motors, local, bid $237,153.65 without trade. They did offer a $67,000 trade allowance, which brought them down to $170,153.65. The Sheriff's Office reviewed all the bids, and we're recommending that we purchase the vehicles from Marshall Motors with the specified installed equipment in the amount of $170,153.65. This amount, of course, includes the trades. But I did speak with Marshall Motors, they advised a three to four months' delivery after the order be placed. He said he would place the order the day after he got authorization to do so, and then 30 days per vehicle for installation after the vehicles are delivered. So best-case scenario is if we did follow staff recommendations today, our last car could come 10 months from now. That's installed. So the budget impact, preliminary budgeted to the Sheriff's Office EIP fund was $239,640. To date, no funds have been used in this purchase, obviously, because we have not hit 2024 yet. But if we were to get this action approved, we would have a balance of $69,486.35 left in that fund. No vehicle payment will be made until the vehicles are delivered to the Sheriff's Office, and of course, that would be in 2024. And so the funds will need to be transferred, the equipment reserved, prior to the end of the budget year.
Questions from the commissioners, or comments?
One question I have. The installation of all the equipment and such, is that included in the purchase price of the car?
Yes, yes, it's the turnkey vehicle, so when the vehicle is delivered to us, for this amount of money, we are having the vehicle with the equipment that we're not repurposing, but the equipment we're purchasing and installed.
And how many vendors would be involved in that?
Marshall Motors received the bid for the vehicle, and KCOM, local outfitter in town, they received the bid to install the equipment, so it'd be a total of two, sir.
Anything, Roger?
Nope.
I'm happy to see that we've got, what, four bids here, as opposed to no bids or one bid? I guess I'm kind of curious as to how these people from Andover and Harper and Alabama got ahold of the bid. I mean, do they get it off of our website, or do we put it on some sort of a? How does it happen that they get ahold of it?
I can speak to Serv, however, I will defer to Ms. Bet that maybe she could answer your questions more in depth.
So for all of our bid documents, we have what we call a plan holders list, that previously, they've been asked to be notified about our bids. In addition to that, we also utilize an online service called Demandstar to put all of our bids, whether it be for vehicles or roof replacements, on a national database, basically, that anybody in the United States could pull our bid documents and submit.
That was kind of the one I was looking for there.
Yeah.
So, all right, thank you. I know that the local people, their hands are tied by the manufacturers. Obviously, the automotive strike is a factor in this, so hopefully this will come to fruition, just as they're predicting in the three to four months, and we'll go from there. Is there any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, we should approve RFA 2023-199 as presented.
Seconded the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-199. Any further comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Amendment three to County Administrator Employment Agreement with Hannah Bet, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. In front of you this morning is amendment number three to the County Administrator's Employment Agreement. The request here is for the signature of the attachment of the employment agreement for County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Your alternatives are to sign the agreement, do not sign the agreement, or delay action for additional information. So the highlights to this amendment are adjustments to the base salary for the county commissioner. The base salary would be $161,170.88. However, the requested amendment would show that the county administrator would be paid There's also amendments to the vacation policy piece of it, as far as the rate of accrual, but also the amount of, the amount of being able to carry up to 192 hours of vacation leave in the vacation leave bank. Those are the two major changes to the employment contract.
Comments from commissioners?
No comment.
I will say that Mr. Smith Haynes has done a fantastic job since he has arrived in Saline County. He has led us through the COVID years and all the distribution of the ARPA funds, and in addition to bringing on many, many, many different plans and ideas and thoughts. And I think this will be a well-spent $10,000, well-earned, well-spent $10,000 expenditure for the county. So as this is an RFA, I will ask, is there any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-201 as prescribed.
Seconded the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-201. Any further comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes for zero. We'll move to item number three.
Staff augmentation for facility RFP development with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commissions. So we have had quite a bit of discussion this year about facilities and our need for moving some folks around, improving some spaces for various county departments, and of course, the biggie is reuse of the Sheriff's Office and Jail that is soon to be vacated as we move to the new facility. And so we have agreed to cooperate with the city of Salina on a study of downtown facilities to see what's sort of the most rational, best use of all the downtown buildings that the two entities plus the building authority have at their disposal. We would like to go ahead and get an RFP out the door to select somebody to conduct that study. Staff is currently backed up with other projects, including trying to wrap up the jail project. And so the request before you today is to hire someone to help write that RFP. So this would not be the person who does the study for us. This would be the person who writes the solicitation for someone to do the study for us. And we contacted both of the firms that we have under existing contract for this type of senior executive services. And we are recommending that we go with Shocky Consulting out of the Kansas City area. Both of the firms had very similar pricing. Shocky, obviously, travel would be a little bit less from Kansas City than from Dallas. Also think that because they are in the Kansas City area, do a lot of work in Kansas, they would be able to market the RFP more to folks who might respond to us rather than somebody out of Dallas. So this would be paid for out of the CIP fund. We've deposited over $2 million in CIP so far this year, and we still have funds that we can transfer from the jail project to pay back what was spent out of the CIP there, as well as the end-of-year transfers. So feel like the CIP is in a very good place, and be happy to answer any further questions from commissioners.
Maybe I didn't hear it just right, but Shocky Consulting, will there be another firm involved then past Shocky? Is that what I heard, or not?
Yeah, so what we're wanting to do is do the study of downtown facilities, right? Shocky's not going to do that study. Shocky's going to help us find the firm to do that study.
And that's going to cost us $34,000 to?
Correct.
That seems like a, what about the city? What's their share of the cost going to be?
So the city will be splitting the cost of the, whoever does the study with us. They will be working, some of their staff will be working with Shocky on this. So that is their contribution to this particular piece. Normally, it would be myself or Hannah working with someone from the city to go through all of this. We just simply don't have time right at the moment.
That part I understand. It just seems like $34,000 is a lot of money to pay somebody to find somebody. That's, that's my comment. Other comments from commissioners?
What's the expected timeframe?
We want to get this wrapped up before the end of the year. So they are ready to get rolling and hopefully have something for us by mid-December.
Well, I agree with the chair, that's a taste to change to go find someone who can look at this project and wasn't expecting the price tag near that high.
Well, the only part of it that I kind of understand is that is your workload within the administrative level at the county right now is pretty full, and we just have to trust that you're doing the right thing for us. On the surface, I don't like this, but I don't see how we can get around it another way. We have a great deal on our plate as far as space that needs to be utilized. We need to find space to house all of our different departments and so forth. So it's a very important project, there's no question about that. And in one respect, $34,000 will be a drop in the bucket, comparatively speaking, to what we're really going to spend on this. So, anything else?
Quick understanding here is that the county, really, the way we were looking at this, won't have to put any manpower in this at all, because we're spending our monies on the $34,000 to hire these people, and the city is the only one that's going to provide any manpower to this group to give it, because they don't have any monies invested in it. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes. I would say we would not be putting staff time towards this until they give us a final product. I mean, we'll obviously want to review it before we bring it to you, but yeah.
So how does, at this point, how does this Sharky, Shocky, how do they even understand what products or buildings and stuff that the county has? If they're just going to come in and say, oh, that's a county, and the city's going to tell them, that's a county, this is a city?
So we've spoken with them about the project and, you know, in enough level of detail that they've been able to come up with this proposal. We also have the facility master plan that was done last year, the whole written document that they're going to be able to take and work from. That includes the list of our buildings, and then the city would contribute their. That includes the list of our buildings, and then the city would contribute their buildings. And I will mention, I mean, the other alternative to the chairman's question is we could simply wait. It would just delay the completion of the project. So, you know, we could save the money, but it would just push the project out further into 2024.
And I'd love to save the money, but I just don't see how we can delay this scope of work based on the needs of the county as far as space and utilization. They're working in conditions, we've got, what, three, four departments over on Nice Street that are working in almost, they're not deplorable conditions, but it's really tight quarters and it's just not feasible to conduct county business in that manner. So we do need to move forward on this, and I understand that. So is there any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Step to the podium and say your name and address, please.
William DeSilvy, 4945 South Simpson Road, Gypsum. I'm really loving this whole county government things as I've been coming here. So what you're explaining to us is you're going to have the county fork out $34,000 for a finder's fee for someone else to come along and say, oh, we can use this old jail for this purpose. So how much is the study? The finder's fee is $34,000. How much is the study going to be? You mean, you tell me you people just can't walk into a building and say, we can probably better utilize this for X function? And you got to spend a $34,000 finder's fee? Really?
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to the commission for action.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA 2023-202 as presented.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for to approve RFA 2023-202. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. All right, we'll move into the informational items, the annual, whoops, excuse me, item number one.
The 2023 Treasurers' Annual Report with Tammy Arnold from the Treasurers' Office.
Morning, Ms. Arnold.
Good morning, commissioners. Sorry it's me instead of Jim, but he's out, so I'm his substitution. This is the, like you said, annual treasurer's report. We prepared it on October 4th, so the information will be as of October 3rd. First of all, in the report are the statements of investments that we had at that point in time. The various bank accounts that we have would be Bank of Tuskegee, Equity Bank, Bennington State Bank, and Plains State Bank. And the aggregate total of all of those is $51,299,91.33. Down below, you can see the certificates of deposits that we have with Equity Bank, Bank of Tuskegee, Bank of Plains, of the Plains, Bennington State Bank, and Exchange Bank, and they total 8.7 million. We have petty cash of $5,250 among the various departments of the county. Cash on hand would be $1,071,653. And the total Saline County funds at that point on October 3rd were $6,057.86. That does not include building authority. Moving on, the 2022 tax abstract between the taxes levied and then the tangible general tax, special assessments, we don't have any in lieu of tax, but then the TIF, that tax abstract came to a total of $85,541, $85,541,408.74. In your packets, you have the breakdown of all of the entities that these taxes are distributed to. Would you like me to go through all those or just give you the summary amount? Which comes to $85,541,408.74. So that balances. Any questions there?
Questions, observations from the commission? If not, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm not done.
You're not done yet, all right.
No, I'm not done.
Keep right on rolling.
Okay. Then we have the collection of taxes information. The net adjusted tax roll after any abated, escaped, and added taxes came to $85,115,762.78. We, after refunds, we have collected a total of $83,763,296.17. Then we have outstanding taxes to deduct from that that are still unpaid, and those equal $1,179,738.60. That averages out to be a percent of delinquencies of 1.39%. It is a little bit higher, 0.21% from last year. But it is still satisfactory, and since this report has been made, we still have collected some more taxes. So hopefully that goes down quite a bit.
Tammy, the $1.179 million of unpaid taxes, but they are still current. Is that correct? I mean, they're not delinquent?
They won't be considered delinquent actually until November 1.
Okay, okay, but they are right on the doorstep then?
They are, yes.
Okay.
If they do become delinquent, is there some type of interest or penalty?
Yes.
Applied at that time?
I believe it's 11% per annum on residential, and I think commercial is a little bit higher than that. That is actually the job of the deputy treasurer, so if I'm wrong, I apologize. But yes, there is interest, and it does add up. I mean, especially when we turn them in for tax sale when they're eligible. Their residence can be three years behind, and that interest adds up after three years, so. Any other questions on this report?
Not for me. Anyone else?
Okay. And I will move on to the interest on idle funds for the third quarter. The top category is the investment of idle funds, but first is the amounts that are actually being utilized in our checking accounts. And that would be Bennington State Bank, which is $49,540,947.97. The total of all of our other bank accounts would be $1,596,293.90. And then, of course, the 8.7 million of our CDs. So that totals $59,837,241.87. And then below that, it gives the breakdown of each month's interest among all of those bank accounts that we're earning interest on. So for July, we earned a total of $229,375.81. In August, we earned a total of $221,889.78. September, we earned $189,134.7. So the total interest earned for the quarter was $640,399.66. And that is $442,91.96 more than we earned at this point last year.
Well, I guess that's the silver lining in the increase in percentages of inflation and so forth is that we are getting a return on our money, so.
Could I ask a quick question of the administrator? Does this growth in interest earnings reflect what we proposed the budget, projected the budget for 2023?
It outstrips what we projected for 2024. It's certainly a lot higher than what we have in the budget for 2023. You know, we did do an increase. Jim and I projected an increase for next year. But historically, if you look at it, this is the first time since, I believe, the 80s where we've actually had a million dollars in interest earnings in a single year. So we tried to be conservative with our projection for next year.
Thank you.
Also, next year, most of the jail money will have been spent, which is a significant portion of this interest that we've earned.
Well, that's a good point to bring up right there.
Yes.
Particularly, you can bring that up next year when that interest earnings is not present.
Right.
And we were doing it this year because of the tax collections for the new jail project.
And the PBC, that's included. I mean, I have another report for those, but our interest earnings are really high this year mainly because of those two items.
We'll try to remember that when next year rolls around and the numbers are depleted.
Right. So I'll move on to the bond interest report, which the fire radios project has been spent. That money is no longer on this report. Jail construction project, the fund balance at the end of July was $10,62,326.51. The PBC project, the end of July, was $303,164.26. The end of August, we've dropped down on the jail to $7.3 million. The PBC project was down to $1,044. And then in September, the jail balance was $4.6 million, $71,000. PBC project was still hovering around $1,000. Here was a little bit of interest added from August, so you see $1,003.96 in September. So at the end of that quarter, those two funds had $4,672,487.87. Significantly in lieu of where from the second quarter. And then the interest for those projects, in July, the jail received $33,205,68. And then in August, it received $25,684.30. September was only $16,426.35. PBC project received in July $1,044. In August, $3.52. In September, $3.53. And we have since closed out that balance to the CIP.
I assume this will be cleaned up, the jail, probably by the end of the year for certain. Maybe a little bit quicker, but like any other thing.
Yes. That, we've been in discussions with both the auditor and with bond counsel about how we go about closing that out. So that's the plan to get everything wrapped up by December 31.
And the ribbon cutting at jail? Well, I'm getting off base here, but October 31st, so.
One question. If I go back to your interest earning report?
Mm-hmm.
And for the third quarter of 2023, $640,399. Is the year-to-date interest earnings on idle bonds, the $76,000, is that included into that?
It is... No, actually, it's really not because the ICS fund that we have for holding extra money, most of that that is in there is still actually county funds, not jail money. So that is extra.
Well, it confuses me because you mentioned that we'll see a large reduction in interest earnings, but the interest earnings on that money isn't reflected then in this?
Well...
Well, yeah, I'll say, I think both of these things are true. The, I do anticipate that there will be a reduction in interest earning next year just based on us having somewhat tighter margins. And we'll talk about the third quarter budget update here in a couple of items. But I do still, we do still anticipate significant interest just in county funds even without the jail fund being.
But if we, to pay off the rest of the jail, most of the money in that fund is going to be depleted, what we talked about.
Yes, most of the money in the fund will be depleted, and we'll also be spending some money out of the jail sales tax, which is held in the county funds rather than in the jail bond, because the bond is held separately. So it, yeah.
So if we deplete, do you anticipate we'll deplete the sales tax money, and then we would end up having to use county money? Okay. Any other questions? That was all I had for you.
I think the questions that I would have left would be for an auditor, and I'm not sure I know how to ask them all, so.
It's okay.
That's their job. But thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item number two.
Engineering Quarterly Update, July to October 2023 with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So yeah, so here I'm going to give you my update since July of this year. I'll start off with accomplishments, projects that we've completed. The concrete pavement design at the Roden Bridge yard that you gave us permission to at least proceed to get bids, that has been completed, and we're out for advertising for bids right now. And then as far as the construction, we've completed our chip seal program. I have been, I'm very happy with the performance of our chip seal. We did use, ended up going with a solid crushed limestone, but it's an aggregate from a different quarry, which is typically a harder aggregate. But we also went with a smaller gradation, a smaller chip. And I think that might be probably what we're going to be moving forward with. I think that that smaller chip is providing us a tighter matrix for those chips, and we're not losing them like we have in the past. So I'm very happy with that. And now moving on to projects that's still ongoing. Start with our reinforced concrete box construction projects. Those are the, shown on the map here. You should also have a map in your packet, but the light blue circles, Reese Construction was awarded this project. They did start on the project on Centennial Road back in September, late September. Currently, the concrete for the entire structure has been poured, and it's in the curing process right now. So while that project is curing, that crew is going to move over to Burma Road just north of Coronado Heights, and they're going to start that project either today or tomorrow. And then Reese Construction had another crew that they were able to free up, and they're going to start on the project at Thorstenberg and Forsy. It'll either be today or tomorrow is what I'm being told. So we'll have, we'll have three construction projects going on with our boxes.
Justin, if I can stop you for a second.
Sure.
The project on Burma Road.
Yes.
It looks like it's by Coronado Heights, looks like that's right on the county line. It looks like it's by Coronado Heights, looks like that's right on the county line.
It is, oh, boy, 100 feet north of the county line.
End of discussion.
Yes, yeah, and we've had the message boards up there, you know, because it's a paved road. You know, so it's, you know, we put more effort on letting the public know that it's going to be closed. The intersection to, you know, intersection with Coronado Heights will be open. So people will be able to get out to Coronado Heights and, you know, and I think they've got some functions planned out there anyway, so we didn't want to disrupt that, so.
And obviously, you know where my question was going to head? If it was right on the county line is the participation for McPherson County. But if it's north of that, it's ours.
Yep, it's just north of it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Moving on to our pipeline projects, those are the green circles with the stars on the map. We've got 19 sites identified for that on Headville, State, Halsted, and Farley Road. Mayor's Specialty Services was awarded that contract. And we're going to have a pre-con about that project this afternoon at 1:00. And they talk like they're going to start next week on the two sites on Farley Road. Those are the fairly good-sized pipes. It's got a lot of fill. It is a gravel road and we're typically doing paved roads, but there's a tremendous amount of fill on top of these pipes. So we're going to line those with centrifugally cast concrete. So starting that next week, so excited about that. Our low water crossing projects.
Just a second. Those projects all seem to be centered up in the northwest part of the county. I assume that's by design. The other, it's not like there isn't other pipelining projects in the future.
Right.
But for right now, that's where it's centered.
Yeah, we try to group them up. You know, because these are relatively a fast-moving operation. You know, that way they can just kind of move down, move down a road instead of jumping, moving all their equipment around the county. So, yeah, we've been kind of working in the northwest corner for the last couple of years and we're going to be moving to other parts of the county here as the, in future years.
Thank you.
Yes. The low water crossing projects, those are, we've got two crossings on McBurnell's Road between Fairchild and Halsted and one on Lapsley Road just west of South Old 81. Volz Parga Construction was awarded this project. I did reach out to Volz Parga, sent them an email here a couple of days ago, and they haven't reached back with me on an anticipated construction start date. But I'm still thinking it's going to be this winter's when they're going to be doing that work. This project was also awarded the KDOT Local Bridge Improvement Program. And so we'll get 85% of the construction costs reimbursed for that. Next is the Waterwell Road Bridge Replacement. And this is located just east of Gypson Valley Road. And this is one of the larger bridges. It'll be 180-foot-long reinforced concrete haunt slab. We've been working on it, kind of on and off. Right now, the Historical Society, they're requiring an archaeological survey of the area. And so we're kind of going through that process. So it's kind of on hold again until we can get that performed. And then we're going to start moving forward with utilities and final design. I still anticipate a winter, you know, or late fall-winter of 2024, construction project on that. Now move on to our asphalt maintenance projects. Our, start off with our overlay. APEC Kansas was awarded the overlay on Burma Road. And that's from Smolyn Road to K-140. And they're currently working on the approaches on that. So the approaches to Burma Road, there's several of them where if it's an asphalt-surfaced approach, we overlay that. And then if it's a, if it's not currently surfaced, we've been adding that surface scene. So they've been working on that. The crew that's going to do the overlay on Main Line is the crew that's working out on Magnolia Road right now with the city. So as what we're being told, as soon as they're done with that project, they're going to move to Burma Road to complete that work. And we do have on Farley Road west of Burma, we've got a crack repair project. And Payment Pros was awarded that project. And they're planning on beginning that project on the second week in November. And that's a project where Farley Road is going to be closed down, you know, in short section. We're not going to close them, close down the entire road, but they'll have some short closures through there. But that shouldn't be much of an issue. And then, you know, finally with the, we do have the county yard, the perimeter roads have an overlay on that as well as the Hugh Street in the community. Kip has got a paving project on there. And they'll be, I'm not sure if they're going to, APEC plans on proceeding with those right after Burma. It's their, we'll just have to see, see how it goes. Our crack seal projects, we've had some projects be completed. Some was completed with Payment Pros LLC. And here in the second week of November, they're going to start those two. So they're going to have two crews going, one to crack seal and one to do the crack repair on Farley Road. Aggregate shouldering, that's the green line on the map. Usually we wait until the end of the year to identify what roads. We're just going to do the shouldering on those. And so we're currently working on the bid documents for that project. And so we'll probably have those, that bid opening here in November. And that's usually a late December, if not moved into January, February kind of timeframe for construction.
I got a quick question on that aggregate shouldering.
Sure.
Because I know you guys just did it and it didn't show it here on that, on Waterwell between the bridge and Holmes Road? You just?
Yes, that was our crews that performed that.
Okay.
Yes.
And what my serious thing is, is that the way it was done, I didn't, I didn't see it done, so I noticed after the fact. But when we just had that little rain the other night, it washed that product out on the road and it made rivers all through that aggregate down through there.
Really? Okay, I'll have to go check that out.
Because it made a lot of rivers where it come down and washed out. It made them, and I'd seen where somebody did go over, off the road and hit it. And it must, there was no compacting done because it sunk terribly when they hit that.
Yeah, we've done, when we did that work, our crews informed me that especially the north shoulder just east of the Land Institute.
Yes.
Was really wet, really, really wet. And I looked at it, it was tremendously wet. Like it's got to be a waterline break kind of wet because it's been dry. You know, and I talked with the Land Institute thinking, okay, well, do they have a waterline that crosses, you know, under the road? And they both, you know, everybody insists that they don't. I've talked with the Rural Water, but the Rural Water is way on the other side on the, I'm sorry, the issue's on the south shoulder, but the waterline's on the north side. And there's no indication anywhere else that there's a leak. And I don't know if there's a spring that's opening up under the road, but it's keeping that wet. And so when you have that agriculture equipment, especially like the spray rigs, they put one tire out there on the shoulder and it's.
Or even the mowers, whatever.
Yeah, you can't keep it compacted through there.
But this here, the way it was laid, I mean, you have a lot of, and it washed a lot of the aggregate out on the road.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll go look at that as soon as I get done here, so. Moving on to Ohio Street improvements. And this is the improvements on Ohio Street from Minner to Waterwell Road. And we're working on a project to elevate that road, you know, to keep it from overtopping so frequently and then to re-gravel it. We were in the process of surveying it when I lost my technician, engineering tech that was performing the survey. And so, you know, just due to, you know, the staffing levels and some other priority projects, that project is kind of been put on the back burner for now. Next is, I mentioned earlier, the concrete payment project at Roden Bridge Yard. You know, I mentioned that we got the design complete and it's out for bid. And we'll be opening up those bids on October 31st. And so in early November, I'll be presenting the bids to the commission. Next is the ARPA backup projects. You know, so several weeks back, you approved to add a couple of transportation projects for backup projects. And that's the Reardon and Holmes Intersection Improvements. And then the Stimmel and Old Highway 40 Intersection Improvement. So the project at Reardon and Holmes, a preliminary design is complete. So we kind of have a good idea what we need to do there. You know, the next step would be to start talking to landowners about right-of-way and utility relocations. And then Stimmel and Old 40 Intersections, I really just started that yesterday. You know, so I'm still trying to get things figured out on that project. And then the last project I'm going to bring up is just the Assyria Road from Old 81 to Ohio Street. So that was an overlay outside of the city limits and then a reconstruction inside city limits. And I'm just bringing this up just so, you know, I did get the cost share application submitted. You know, so we'll see where that ends up. I'm not sure, I believe, don't, don't hold me to this, but I believe it'll be November sometime, November, December, before they make decisions. KDOT makes decisions on approving the cost share projects, so. As far as budget update on our contractual asphalt work, I'm working with a budget of about $3.4 million. And that includes 2.7 from our contractual, asphalt contractual budget line item. I've got about $228,000 from our 127 account. And that is money from our federal exchange program that I've been rolling over into our asphalt maintenance projects. And then finally, $500,000 from the landfill impact fund. So currently, I'm still estimate, because I can estimate all the work, you know, from the overlay, chip seal, you know, crack seal and shouldering. But I'm still estimating a project of about $3.1 million. And so that's going to leave about $320,000 left for a budget carryover. Our 124 account, and that's our, the 1-mil special road construction, has a current unencumbered balance of about $1.26 million. Our 125, just special bridge construction or 2-mil, that has an unencumbered balance of $1.6 million. And then our 127 special highway improvement has an unencumbered balance of about $2.6 million. So that's it. Are there any other questions?
Those accounts have a lot of money left in them. I mean, are there projects that are headed down the pike for 2024 that will eat up some serious money there?
And 2024, so for like the bridges, the 125 account, you know, once we get the Waterwell Road project, you know, out for bid, you know, that's going to be a, that could be, it's hard estimating construction projects now. But that could easily be, you know, $800,000 to $900,000 project. You know, so that'll eat up a chunk of that. But that's going to be at the end of next year, you know, when we start using those funds and we'll have another, another amount of funds or another year of allocations, you know, put into those. But we've got our pipeline and projects, it hasn't started yet. You know, so that'll come out of those funds. The low water crossing projects will come out of there. You know, so there's a lot of current projects, bid, approve, but just we haven't used any of the expenses for those projects yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that is, that is, thank you, Chair. Because that was one of my questions is that 2023 estimated construction cost of $3 million, will that come out of those of four counts?
Yep.
That is separate, that is.
That's separate, yes.
That's already been budgeted and that's already?
Yeah, that's, we've got, you know, that's coming from the, our budgeted line item, a contractual asphalt. There's 2.7 there. And then, you know, the 227 will come out of the 127. So I do, let me rephrase that. So there's a 227, 228.
That will come out of that 2.6?
Correct.
Okay.
And that'll come out of there and then the 500 from the landfill impact fund.
Okay, thank you.
Do you expect the Ohio Street improvement to happen in 2024? I'll take that as a no.
If it does, it'll be late 2024. I mean, because the issue that we run into, so there's going to need to be a lot of material hauled to that project. You know, and I have talked with Kubota about that large pile of, they got a couple big piles of dirt, you know, if that could be a source of soil, you know, to build that road up. And they said, you know, it very well could be. But my concern is if it's, you know, when you put a project out later in the year, contractors are already booked. You know, and then we won't get prices or won't get good prices. And so we'll just kind of have to see how it all works out. You know, I might have to, you know, come to the commission and ask about, you know, hiring a consultant to do some survey. Because that's the first thing that takes, you know, before you can start doing a project, you've got to survey the project. You know, and just I'm down to three people, including myself, you know, covering a lot of projects and keeping things designed. And it's getting difficult. So I might have to approach the board about that. And it's a long project, you know, so it takes a substantial amount of time.
All right. All right, thank you, Justin. We'll move to item number three.
Third Quarter Budget Update with Philip Smith-Haines, County Administrator.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning again. So each quarter, we take a look at where we are with the adopted budget. So this is always an interesting time of year because we've already approved the budget for 2024, but we're still looking at the budget for 2023 and where we are. And I will say, there's nothing surprising this quarter. It's sort of the same, a continuation of the same themes that we reviewed last quarter, which was in July. So the good news is revenues are up pretty much across the board. The bad news is expenditures are also up across the board when compared to prior years. That there's really only one area where there's a potential concern about the budget. And that is in the Health Department. Their expenditures are up, you know, over $400,000. Their revenues are also up over $400,000. And often that's related to grants, so that can be a budget adjustment at the end of the year. Within the general fund, there are five departments that have sort of spent more than three-quarters of their budget through the first three quarters of the year. Those are not surprising. Again, one of them is emergency management and that's related to a particular grant. So they've got grant revenue to support that. Two of them are the county attorney and the courts. Again, that's something we've been anticipating with coming out of COVID, the backlog in trials. We've put some ARPA funding to that for that very reason. And then the other two are Expo Center and Senior Services. And again, that's really related to utilization of those services. A lot more going on at the Expo, generating a little bit more revenue as well, but certainly higher on the expenditure side. And then same with Senior Services, it's primarily related to their food costs, which have jumped up substantially. So again, as noted earlier during the Treasurers Report, interest income has been phenomenal, I guess is the word I would use for this year, compared to, like I said, anything we've seen since the 1980s. But, you know, I would say we very much are reflective of the economy. So the places where we're investing and getting interest income, that's been great, the higher interest rates. But on the other hand, the more property-related things, the filing revenues in the register of deeds, the planning and zoning revenues, all those kinds of things that are related to turnover in properties, those are down, not down substantially, but down compared to last year. So I think that's just, again, reflective of what's going on in the economy overall. And then, since Justin was just here, contract hauling is the only sort of area within Roden Bridge that has taken a substantial increase. And that was something that Justin and Darren alerted us to during the budget process for '24. We did increase it. I don't know whether we increased it enough based on what they've spent year-to-date. But overall, not a bad report, just, you know, continues to be a cautionary tale. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions from Commissioners. Good job. Doesn't look like we have any at this time, Phil. Thank you for that report. We'll move to item number four.
Commissioners' comments.
Anyone have anything?
Nope.
I know that we have a announcement that's pretty important.
Yes, so today is the deadline for voter registration. Our office will be open till 8:00 PM, so you're welcome to come in and update your voter registration. Also, if you are 17, it will be 18 on or before Election Day, you can get registered early prior to your birthday, so you're welcome to come in and do that, so you're able to vote once you turn 18. And you can also check your voter information on Kansas Voter View. You'll go out to, to that website, and you will put in your name and birthdate, and it will show you, so you can double-check and make sure your registration is up to date. You can also view your sample ballot out there, and we start early voting in our office on Monday.
Okay. Any other announcements? It appears that we have an executive session.
Yes, sir. Staff would request that the commission recess to executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss a department head performance evaluation for seven minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:13 AM.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we move into executive session under non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss the non-elected personnel for seven minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign, we're in executive session. Executive session, and there was no action taken, and it appears that the agenda items for next week are the DOS update and the KMA outstanding service. Well, someone has something specific to be brought up, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're adjourned. Thank you for watching.